...of council meetings?
Five thirty, I call an order to the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. First item is the acceptance of the minute from our February 23rd meeting. Moved by Mr. Riggi, who has a second. Second by Mr. Ferrari. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Eight ayes. One item that we're dealing with tonight, the resolution transferring or approving the transfer of three properties from the agency to the city of Schenectady. Entertain a motion. Some of it is Brazos and Budavere. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions adopted. Any other business to come before the agency?
The adjournment.
That's moved for adjournment. Moved by Mr. Posner, who has a second. The Riggi, all in favor? Agency stands adjourned. Thank you.
Still a minute. Anything good? Good seeing you, Stephen. You earned your money.
Public Finance Committee to order. We're moving the items around just a wee bit. Where first is going to be the Knights of St. John's Board.
She's not here now. She's coming down in a few minutes. I wish we could talk to the other two. We're going to go first.
All right. Well, let's move on to the 2014 audit acceptance then. Let's go to Speaker DeGenova, Mr. Ferrari.
Good evening, President, Council Mayor. I got the honor of privilege of walking you through the 2014 audit tonight. We have Mr. James Kuzak and his associate, John Kaplaski, here from Kuzak and Company, auditors from the city who did the audit for the city of Schenectady. They're here to answer any questions that you may have as we go along. First of all, does everybody have their audit packages?
Yes.
Everybody's got one? Ready to go? Okay. Before we start, I just wanted to mention and commend the city's accounting department. Commissioner Devin DeGenova, Accounting Supervisor Liz Nelson, Junior Accountant Alex Leibson, and Accounts Payable Helen Rowley. These guys literally handle tens of thousands of sheets of paper just to be able to produce these financial reports. These are the accountants who are here first thing in the morning, last ones out at night. Commissioner DeGenova appears on Saturdays and more than often, more Sundays than usual on Sundays also. So I just want them to be mentioned and commended for all the hard work that they do. All right, let's get started with the regulatory basis financial statement. Everybody is at that? There we go. Pages one through eight is the management discussion analysis. I just want to make a note here, the management discussion analysis and the notes throughout the audit was prepared by city staff. This is the second year we've done this. This brings us closer to compliance and for the GASB rule, GASB 34. So I just wanted to mention that that's what we're doing. I'm going to just give you a quick fund overview. Of the four major funds, General, Water, Sewer, and Golf, all but Golf had revenues exceeding expenses. The General Fund had a surplus of $2.4 million. Water Fund had a surplus of $720,000. Sewer Fund had a surplus of $910,000. And the Golf Fund had a deficit of $87,263. But let me make a note here on that, too. Of that $87,000, $86,997 was used from capital reserves to purchase more lawnmowers and other equipment for the Golf Fund. And this is part of the philosophy we had where we want to use capital reserves instead of borrowing and creating more debt. But if you really look at the operational deficit for the Golf courses, really was only $266 if you look at 2014 revenues against 2014 expenditures. And this is due mainly to the bad weather. You remember heavy days we had to close. All right, let's move along, go directly to page 12. And this is the balance sheet of our General Fund as of December 31st, 2014. And I just want you to note the line before the bottom line there, total fund balance in 2014, the General Fund had a fund balance of $16.8 million. This is a 70% growth from 2013, which had a $14.4 million balance. But included within that $16.8 is $7,700,000 of unrestricted balance, which is 9.5% of the 2015 adopted budget. And what this tells us is that we have a very strong liquidity value. And this was what serves us very well when we are rated by the rating agencies and our lenders want to lend us money. We have a strong liquid balance. In 2013, the liquidity balance was 8.7% of the 2014 adopted budget. So you see, we've grown that much. And this also, in that $16.8, includes a $3.2 million capital reserve. And this is, once again, position us to fund capital projects, you know, without using debt again. You know, Mayor makes an adjustment, you guys pass, and during the year, this helps us not, we don't have to use debt, we use our reserves. Something that's really helping us, as you see, as we go along. Now, along with the adoption of this 2014 audit, the Finest is also proposing a 2015 budget amendment in the amount of $718,000 from this unrestricted balance. And the reason why we're asking this is to increase our, we're going to be asking to increase our retirement budgets. We want to make our retirement budgets like our police and fire, where we're going to amortize it, but this will make us able to pay the police and fire retirement in full. So that's why we're going to request that. And for our regular employees' retirements, the additional increase from settlements of the contracts and retroactive payments increases the budget for retirement. And as part of that, we also go toward along those lines. Even after this $718,000 transfer, we still would have a $6.6 million unrestricted fund balance remaining. And of course, you've got to remember, we used over $430,000 just for the J Street Fire. So that's where the number's at, the 6.6. And still, 6.6 is still 8.1% of the 2015 budget, which again, gives us strong liquidity and shows the strength that the city is really gaining as we go along and do this. All right, let's go to page 13, look at the statement of revenues and expenditures for the General Fund. If you go down the actual column, is page 13? Yeah. You have it unbacked, okay. It's a little different in my, I figure this out one of these days.
It's still 13.
Yeah. If you go down the actual column, you see that actual revenues were $2.4 million greater than expenditures. That's our surplus, $2.4 million. And when we start looking at the revenues and the revenue, how the budget's performance, you can see that the comparison of actual revenues to revised revenue, if you look at the revenue side, the budgets excluding the appropriate fund balance, which was not needed, shows that the revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by $1.9 million. Now, some of the key areas where the revenues exceeded the budget were real property tax and related collections, you know, pilots, interest, penalties. Those we collect over $1.3 million more than budgeted. Also, department mental income was up over $396,000. A lot of this was, the main contributor was county catching up on some of the police grants that we had. We got two years of revenues from them. The treasury and tax collection fees were up $122,000. And code enforcement lines were up $166,000. Now, non-property tax items came in over $233,000. And $119,000 of that was from the county sales tax contribution.
How much was that?
$119,000 from this county sales tax.
Does it catch up?
No, it's better than we budgeted.
Better than we budgeted, yeah. Tony, can I just stop?
Yes.
The pilots, what was the increase in our pilots? Is it separated here someplace?
Yes.
From what we had last year to, from 13 to 14?
I don't have that, I don't have that with me right now, but I can get that information for it.
That breakdown?
Yeah.
I was just looking for that.
Yeah.
And again, back to the sales tax piece. We had budgeted, what did we budget for 14?
I got that right here.
Was it 11. something?
11.2.
Was it 11.2?
11.2.
Okay.
Okay.
And we went up $100,000. Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let's look at some key areas revenues did not meet budget. There were fines and forfeitures, which were under by $342,000. $181,000 of that was from parking fines and $129,000 was from deliquid parking fines. All right. Now, let's look at the actual expenditures now. Actual expenditures excluding encumbrances were $4.3 million less than revised expenditure budget. Now, the key areas where expenditures were under budget include employee benefits and employee benefits which were under $3.8 million. I mean, hospital medical insurance itself was under by $2.8 million. But I might also make another note on that.
Say.
As of, you know, we carry a liability of, as of 2014, December 31st, 2014, of $575,000 on our general sheet balance. That's payments due, payments due in 2014, but not yet paid. So if we're actually looking, if all things ended today, if we're all looking at it, the variance would actually be $2.3 million or 11% of the budget. The other big factor was workers' compensation was under by $732,000, and this is mainly due to the payments to the medical providers. General government support was under by $607,000. This includes the mayor's department, the council department, finance departments, law, engineering, the clerk's office, property facilities, communications, insurance and judgments and claims. All were under budget, exception of unallocated expenses. And they were over only because of the support that we gave to Buffalo for the support of the snow mercy had by $13,000. And our credit card transactions were over by $19,000. So those are the two, the big reason why they were not under budget. Key areas where expenditures were over budget or exceeded the budget was, of course, public safety. Overall, the police department was over budget by $869,000. Police overtime was over by $976,000. So even though overtime was so high, they did try to cut back in other areas. Overall, the fire department was under budget by $389,000. Utilities and sign maintenance and additional departments of public safety were over by $29,000. And this is mostly due to snow removal, street lighting. But the remaining departments in that fund, street administration, road maintenance, garage and body shop were all under budget by $88,000. This year, we are going to put $2 million, we're going to add to the capital reserve. And once again, this increases our, you know, our ability to fund expenditures without going into debt. Before we go out of water department, I'll talk about a management letter. 2014, for the second year in a row, there's no material findings for 2014. Since all previous findings have been addressed, once again, there's no management letter. And once again, I should commend the accounting department for such a good task. All right, let's move on to the water department. The water, sewer and golf department, you're going to see it's all going to be on one page, the balance sheet and statement of expenditures and revenues. Okay, looking at the water revenue, we look at the total fund balance. Oh, I'm sorry, page 14. Excuse me.
It's all right, go ahead.
Just going right through it.
Sorry.
It's on here. Hopefully, I'm not rushing it through it. Everybody okay?
You're doing good.
Okay.
The numbers are good.
Keep it going. The numbers are good. Page 14, the wire department. Once again, we're going to look at the total fund balance. The total fund balance, $5.7 million, up 15% from 2013, which was $4.9 million. We're going to have a unrestricted cash balance of $1.2 million available. And this also includes a capital reserve of $4 million, as you realize, I explained how that both works. Revenues exceed expenditures, they produced a $719,000 surplus. And the key concepts, what happened was even though actual revenues were short of the budget, city's management of operations, you know, held the line on expenditures. And the expenditures were under budget by approximately $1.32 million. And this is what created such a positive result. Key components where expenditures were less than budget include home and community service departments, which were under by $940,000. Reservoir and pumping together were under by $572,000. And water distribution was now $470,000. This year, we plan to put $1.2 million to the capital project reserves. It's all for the future. Any questions? Everybody's good? Good to me. All right. Okay, go to the next page, page 15. We're going to look at the sewer fund. Again, the sewer fund, we'll look at the fund balance, the total fund balance of $8.3 million is an increase of 12% from 2013 of $7.4 million. We're going to have unrestricted cash, we're going to have unrestricted balance of $1.7 million available. And this includes a capital reserve of $5.1 million. Revenues exceed expenditures, again, producing the surplus of $906,000. The key components, once again, this is where revenues actually fell short of the budget. And again, the management held the line on the expenditures. And the expenditures were under budget by approximately $1.6 million. And that's what created the positive results. Key components where expenditures were less than budget include, again, home and community service under budget by $774,000. Sewer treatment disposal under by $436,000. Sanitary sewers were under by $339,000. And general government support departments were under budget by $731,000. Undistributed expenses were under by $727,000. I just want to make another note on that. In 2014, we encumbered $236,000 of that to be expended in 2015 for projects that came in at the end of the year. We encumbered the funds that we're not going to spend till 2015. This year, we're going to be adding $1.3 million to our capital project reserves. Any questions on sewer fund? Nope? All right, let's go to our recreation fund, which you all know and love as our golf department. Our golf fund or golf department. Well, as I mentioned earlier, the golf fund was, if you look at the fund balance, our fund balance had decreased from 2013, 13%, from $686,000 to $599,000. And this is, you know, basically because we used the capital fund to purchase those items, which you said, without borrowing. So it's not really a bad thing. Within that, we have $151,000 available as unrestricted, and we do have a capital reserve of $427,000. Revenues were less than expenditures, producing an $87,000 deficit. And again, as I mentioned, if we take this deficit adjusted to remove the $87,000 of capital reserve expenditures we had to purchase the moors, the deficit would actually only be $266.
That's fair enough.
Yeah. Specifically, revenues from the operation were short of the budget by $94,000. Golf course fees were under by $115,000. And expenditures were under budget by $94,000. But again, you know, golf depends on the weather. We started late. We had bad weather throughout the year. And I think things are going to be looking much better this year. This year, the capital project reserve account has not been increased. We're going to keep it at that level. Any questions about that? Go ahead.
Yeah, because you said that the golf fund was under, the expenditures were more.
The expenditures were under budget, but the revenues were also under budget. So that's what created that $266 deficit operational. If we go to page 17, we're going to be looking at the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Fund. This is our downtown fund of revenues in, revenues out. Really no explanation for this. Want to look at page 18, we're in miscellaneous special revenue. This is actually the Upper Union Street bid. Same type of deal, the money comes in, money goes out. Page 19, we have the special grant funds. Once again, these are where we account for all the grants that come in through the city. Everything's fine and in order. Next page, page 20 is our capital project fund. These are the projects that we have listed and operating as of right now, as we're going through, especially right now in summertime, we're going through the seasons, going through all the projects. So as you can see, we have money available and we're working on it. And we're going to just keep on going right through it. Page 21 is our trusted agency account. This is mostly our liability accounts. This is where we store a lot of our, you know, social Medicare, social security, stuff where money, cash goes in and out. We also do a lot of our parks and our rose gardens and stuff where money goes in, money goes out. It's all there, as you can see, it's in really good shape. Page 22, non-current liability account rule. This is, and Jimmy, you have to help me on this. As I recall, this, not recall, as we go through, is this is the present value of the 30-year amortization of future expenditures.
For the post-employment benefits.
For post-employment benefits. So this is the present value of what our future value would be from 30 years from now, right? Is that correct? Present value?
It's actually the current value based on the 30-year amortization. Liability is much higher, but this is the amount that's reported.
This is mostly, you know, part of, to comply with GASB 4 to 5, which we are doing there. That completes the regulatory basis. Do you have any questions before we move on to the single audit?
Questions, Cameron, with Mr. Ferrari.
Yes, sir.
Throughout all of them, there's a category that's called Home and Community Services.
Yes.
So each, why, each category seems to have that, could you just expound a little more detail on that?
Yeah, yeah. Home and Community Services is actually, is what's directly, was directly used and expended for the use of, I want to say employee, not of the taxpayer. It's usually management of, if we look at the water department, it'd be like the management of the water fund, be the source supply of the water, the transmission, distribution of water. So anything that deals directly with the user, that'd be the Home and Community Home and Service Department. That goes directly to, for the user, which would be our taxpayers.
Because I just thought that we were under budget on that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Yeah. I have another question regarding, you said the J Street Fire, just go over that again, please.
We had, I think the council approved a $433,000 appropriation of the capital reserves, of the unrestricted reserves to use for the J Street Fire. And I just wanted to mention that.
Can you do it for me? Mr. Ferrari is exactly correct. That was an emergency.
That was emergency basis, excuse me.
That gives us the ability to react and take the money from the unassigned fund balance.
Exactly. And that's exactly why you have the unassigned balance, so that you're able to take these emergencies and be able to use it without trying to borrow money. And it shows how strong the liquid we are able to lose such as a thing like that.
So does any part of that get the reverse through the owners of the building or in any way through?
That's what we're trying to do, getting them still finishing up doing the sidewalks and the curbs, we'll get the total cost in place. There will be a substantial litigation for both those buildings, some of the J Street Fire.
Is there any kind, do we get any assistance because of such a major fire? I knew that we had ATF and everybody committed. Is there any?
ATF, state fire, there's some presence in New York State who saw something, they don't charge us for any assistance. ATF picked up some investigator calls when they were doing the initial cause of origin. After they did their component of it, the city was fully responsible for the final investigation. Insult traders were in recovery, but there's no victims. It was the second building. And we have all related expenses with demolition and site security and perimeter, the last one we have in sidewalk, restoration, a little bit of the street service, like most also.
Other questions?
Yes.
Other questions, Cameron? Yes, what I feel.
The press, did you also, I'm kind of focusing on what's up over. So the credit card expenditure, because if you could give a little more explanation on that?
Yes, we had budgeted $100,000, credit card cost came $119,000. We're in the process this year of trying to lower the cost of the credit card charges. We're implementing a payment system through munis, which will hopefully reduce the cost of the credit card transactions.
Just a follow-up, that would attribute to an increase in payment?
Excuse me?
That would attribute towards an increase in payment towards the city, or the fee to go up?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much.
Less fees, more, yeah.
It's a good, it's a good.
It's a double way.
Yeah, it's a double.
Good for us. Yes.
Did you also say that code enforcement was over?
Code enforcement revenues, yeah, were increased.
Not the expenditures?
Not expenditures.
Okay. Good way. But that's a good way. A good way.
Yes, now, like you said, you know, probably bring in this report showing the General Fund, you know, increasing their fund balance, you know, it's very exciting as an accountant to be able to present that to you. Should we move on to the single audit?
Yep.
All right. That is the smaller packet, the city's Schenectady single audit.
Tony, what's it looking at? What does it look like?
What page is that?
That's what I'm asking. It should be a separate package.
You have a separate one? Chuck? No. Chuck signed, no.
It's after 54. Pages, yes, 54.
Page 54, okay.
Like father, like son, huh?
Thank you, John. We got each other's back.
That's it. There you go.
All right. Because the city of Schenectady expends more than $500,000 federal funds, a single audit of the expenditure is required. A single audit provides assurance to the federal government as to the management and use of the federal funds by the city. If you look at page seven of the audit, you will see that in 2014, the city has expended $8.3 million of federal funds. I'm just going to break it down for you a little bit. 69% or $5.7 million was spent on HUD projects. These are projects as a CDVG, ESG, Emergency Shelter Grant, the Home Fund, Shelter Plus Care, and the Lead Reduction Grant. 20% or $1.66 million was spent on US Department of Transportation, and that was the Erie Boulevard Project. That's $10.4 million since 2010, we received. Just a little note there also. $436,000 for Department of Justice or 5% of the total grant, that's for the COPS grant, bull crew vests, the JAG, which are other police grants, VA and the equitable share through the city. 6% or $514,000 was through Homeland Security in New York State and the federal government. That provides us with a lot of the camera equipment and equipment that the police are using now. And as you realize, with the last couple bigger arrests we had, the cameras were essential in a lot of finding of those arrests. A lot of that money came through, the funding is through this program. If you look at page number 10, you will see the summary of the auditor's results. If you look at page number ten, you will see the summary of the auditor's results. There are no material weaknesses, no significant deficiency pertaining to internal control or financial reporting, or the financial reporting on the major programs. And we at City of Schenectady, because of that, we qualify as a low-risk audit. I just, any other questions? Do you want to go through anything?
I'm sorry, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Ferrari?
Yeah, just a comment, and again, to include yourself on the team, I am very, very impressed, again, really being my first full year on the council and just seeing what a difference your group has made in the mayor's office as well, to see this budget, to see these surpluses and the way we've really meticulously working through the budget for us, and thank you to the auditor as well. But congratulations, and it's a pleasure being on this council and a pleasure having you guys as employees.
Thank you, Mayor, as well. Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions?
That's big, that's big stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari.
Thank you. And once again, I just want to tell you how proud I was to be able to give you this good results.
Yeah, wonderful. Come do my books.
Ms. Ward is here, so we're gonna move on to the Knights of St. John's now?
We need to accept it.
Oh, we have to accept, I'm sorry.
I'm moving.
Second, all in the favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Knights of St. John's, Ms. Ward?
Hi, just, just, all right, so the Knights of St. John's is a tax-exempt organization in your city. A few years ago, back in 2007 or eight, they had lost their exemption status and then essentially stopped receiving, then they regained their exemption status again, just due to probably a non-filing. Once they regained their exemption status, they stopped receiving tax bills, so they were unaware that this tax bill had been accruing. We're trying to clean up a lot of the old foreclosures, old taxing that are out there in a subsequent foreclosure right now, so some of the stuff that's really pretty old, this one, this one lien. So essentially, what we're asking for today is that the interest and penalties be waived on that old taxing going back to, I believe it's 2008.
I just want to clarify, because I think this is very important, we deal with these, they pop up now and again, right? But this really was an oversight of a part of the city. They were not receiving the notifications that they should have been receiving.
Yeah, they never received a bill.
Right. So they did, they thought they were offset, and all of a sudden they go, right. So, I mean, although we look at these things and say, well, you know, but this is really clearly, clearly an oversight of a part of the city, so I just want everyone to be, you know, fully aware of that factor. Questions, comments?
So have we looked to see if there's anybody else in this situation? Yes, and there are a couple others not in this foreclosure. This one is actually ending June one. There is a couple more in the July seventeen, but we're in the process of trying to work those out, but there are a couple churches that we have the same issue with.
You're asking here for, first, to weed the interest and penalty?
That's correct.
What about the principal?
The principal would remain.
Remain, and they will be responsible for that?
Yeah.
So how much did the principal, how come, that they had to take that out?
I believe it was about fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah, and now have to be paid by June first.
Fourteen hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Fourteen hundred and seventy-one dollars. And that have to be paid by June first, yeah. And I've spoken with them, and I believe that's something they're able to do.
All right, thank you. Other questions, comments?
I guess my concern is, since they weren't on the list, or somehow didn't make the list that they thought they were on, and we weren't sending billing out, how did it wind up on the foreclosure list then? How would they know they weren't being billed? I mean, if they didn't see the foreclosure in the paper, luckily they did.
We sent them notifications at their address too, about it, so, you know, we notified a few addresses, I think, that we haven't filed. One was at the State Street, one, the problem there is I don't think that anybody's there every day getting the mail, because of this, so luckily they can see it. This again, like I said, it's just an, I was trying to weed out some of the stuff that we have outstanding, about seventy to eighty parcels in the city that we had these old taxing on that go back, either people that filed homesteads and, or, you know, something similar to this, so they're just kind of these oddball things out there, so.
As long as we're sure that this is gonna happen to another, not for a crowd, but again, we've been cleaning this up for two or three years, it's too bad, it's sad. Clearly, as Ms. Brazel pointed out, the city's at fault on this one, so I don't see whether there should be any problem with granting what they're asking for.
I'm moving. Second?
All in the favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next, we move on to the budget, 2015 budget reincorporation, Ms. Genova or Mr. Ferrari?
Sure. So as Anthony mentioned on the 2014 budget, what we're asking to have done is to take a, an amount from our unrestricted fund balance, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and bring it into the 2015 budget to increase our police and fire retirement budget, and what that'll do is it'll make us have a 2015 budget that projects us paying a hundred percent of the bill when it comes in. Additional money is being brought in to give us some leeway on our other retirement line, because as, as everyone is well aware, over the last probably twelve months or a little less, we've settled several union contracts that have retroactive payments. Those are all pensionable, so that wouldn't have been in the estimate that we would have had when we put the budget together. So what this does is it creates what I hope will be something that we will see every year, where we have strong operational results that we then can, at the same time we adopt an audit, bring in money to make sure that our retirement payments are whole, without having to put pressure on when we put the budget together to create revenues or assume surpluses that maybe we're not all that comfortable with. So it's something that we hope to be, make that to you on a yearly basis.
Questions, comments? Good news?
Just wanna, I have a question, would this bring us current with our retirement payment to the police sometime?
It will bring, it will make the 2015 budget projection equal what the city expects the bill is to be. So rather than be in a situation where we only pay a part of the bill and amortize some of it, it'll make us whole from our 2015.
Perfect, perfect, good. I'm moving. Second?
All in the favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallen, you're up next with supplemental agreement number four, the CHA for Erie Boulevard.
For accounting purposes, I'd like to start with supplemental agreement number five, is that possible?
Okay, we'll start with supplemental agreement number five, Erie Boulevard, countdown from there.
Supplemental agreement number five is our supplemental agreement with the New York State DOT. It's related to supplemental agreement number four, but it allows us to do number four, so that's why I'd like to start with five. Supplemental agreement number five, you should have a Schedule A and some information like typical with these projects, increases the federal funding for this project by approximately one point eight six million dollars. So what the, some of that was the time delay costs, unforeseen conditions in the ground related to construction, construction inspection services. This is all the costs, it took us about six months to kind of audit the project, to get all the costs together, working with our consultant, the DOT, very involved process, going back and forth, and this is what we have come to. So included in this is number four, just so that's how that would work.
Mr. Clark, please. Do we have two separate packets tonight?
Yes.
Yes, there are two.
Ran out of the.
Yeah, the second one.
Ran out of the second.
Should be here.
We can pass those down, thank you very much, and then just give one for two.
One is.
My second?
Question, is there, is there any matching on this, or is this?
No, this is extended, this is federally typical, it's eighty, fifteen, five. So of the one point eight, five, six, the city is responsible for five percent of that, with the state covering fifteen, federal government covering eighty percent.
State is fifteen, city is five, and the federal is eighty.
And on top of that, like you see, there is a, an additional share for the city portion of it.
Hold one moment, please.
Of course.
We want to make sure everybody's able to view the information.
Where's the, where's the force field, force?
I'm lost.
There you go, all right, very good. Let's give Mr. Brady a chance to read you that quickly.
Sure, the line that you want to look at that has changed is the dot three two one extension, that's the dot three two one, and on the second page, the dot one six extension, those are the two that have been modified.
So our cost is looking at one point eight, is that correct? Our cost, the city, the city portion is one point eight?
No, the city portion is five percent of the one point eight. I had that in another one, I can just tell you quick, because I have that on another, actually, I have it on this worksheet right here.
Five percent of the one point eight, okay, that's right.
Sorry, I have it upstairs.
That's right.
Ninety, approximately ninety-five thousand, so ninety-five plus the forty-three, which is additional city costs around a hundred and fifty.
Okay, questions or comments, now that we're all on the same page? So does anybody need more time to redo the information?
Second?
Before we approve, any questions? No? Okay, aye, very good, and now we will go to agreement number four.
Number four is our agreement with our consultant, it is the fourth agreement with the consultant, they have the similar name, this one, I want to make sure, we have five agreements with the state, this is our fourth agreement with our consultant. What this is for is for the construction inspection and related design services that were related to number five. So this is for an agreement with Cliff Harbor for seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and it is coming out of the one point eight six that we just approved.
Questions?
Well, I'm not, it's really not about funding, but I do have a question regarding to, these are federally funded projects, and are we meeting our MWE goals in this?
On this project, we did, oh yeah.
We did?
This project, we did.
Okay, that is good news.
Yeah, no, we were, we were above on this.
You have a report on that?
We can have a report, I can give you a report if you'd like one.
That'd be great.
Sure.
I think that's something we've all been given.
Yes, that's good.
Not the report, the news.
Meeting the goal, yes.
Mr. Wallen, I'm like, you're not doing a job. I said something we've all been waiting for, he said, not the report, the good news.
Meeting the goal, yes.
So questions, comments on this?
I'm moving again.
Okay.
Second?
All in the favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Good job.
And that is all the excitement party for the finance committee, so I will ask the motion adjourned.
Someone, second?
All in the favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I will call the committee on Intergovernmental Relations to order, and we have one, two items, but the first is a Department of State Local Government Efficiency Grant, and I'll call on our, I will, Mr. Mayor, and others.
I'll turn the call over to staff from Center for Technology and Government, and they will walk you through a presentation.
Good evening.
My name is Megan Cook, I'm from the Center for Technology and Government at the University at Albany, and I'm joined by my colleague Derek Worthmuller, who's the Director of Technology, and Megan Sutherland, who's our Program Assistant. Today, I'm going to talk to you about a lot of things, cover three topics, one of them being the grant, and I'm going to go over, not quickly, but I don't want us to be here all night, I know you have other things to talk about. So, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we're good.
Yes, great, okay. All right, so Center for Technology and Government, I'm assuming I don't need to tell you who we are, but we're an applied research center, and we focus on the workings of government. We work with governments all over the world to help them understand their IT and their information challenges, so they can be better consumers of technology. All right, so our presentation tonight, I'm going to talk quickly about how we got here to this grant, I'm going to talk a little bit about a project we did with the City of Schenectady, and then talk about the grant. So, quick recap. Informal information sharing around code enforcement has been going on for two years or more at CTG, started with the City of Albany, bringing together a group of people, and before we knew it, once a month on Friday mornings, police fire code enforcement from Troy, Albany, Schenectady, and Amsterdam were meeting to do ad hoc information sharing. Through that process, at CTG, through that process, we decided we would apply for a consolidated funding application. Collectively, the group applied for two, and both were not funded. Reviews came back saying, absolutely, this project has to happen, you want to share information, but there's no bucket of money. Through, after that time, we sat together, we said, what are we going to do? Went and made a presentation to Secretary of State, who then said, I get this problem, I understand it, but what you didn't do was you didn't tell me how much it costs. How much are you spending on blighted and vacant properties? So after that, we went back in Schenectady and Amsterdam and tried to figure out how much is being spent, tabulated those numbers, went back to the Secretary of State and said, this is, this is a big problem. He pointed us to the Local Government Efficiency Grant, where we then collectively applied for the grant, as City of Schenectady is believed, and was then awarded. So I just gave you two years in the making, okay?
One sentence.
All right, see, we are going fast.
You're good.
So in the middle of that, Mayor Hartnett said, if we got this grant, would the City of Schenectady be able to jump in right away? And we said, well, maybe not, we need to know a little bit more about what's going on in the City of Schenectady's code enforcement environment. So this picture represents really what we did in the project. It was thirteen weeks, it was a quick look, it doesn't cover everything, but we went out and we were trying to find out information needs. Knowing that no system or grant can ever give everybody the information they need, we wanted to ask anyway, to find out. And then we looked at information realities. We spent time in all the systems, we spent time talking to all the staff, we mapped some business processes that the code enforcement officers are using, just to understand what both environments are located on. And so you see, you know, we had workshops at CTG, which is located on Wolf Road in Albany, and overall, we were able to come up with some very high-level findings and some, some deep findings in information needs, high-level findings in other areas, to help inform the This is a busy slide. Essentially, this is what it means. You want to do data analysis, you want to inform policy. Governments all over the world want to do this. But in order to do that, you have to back up, you have to make sure you have the solid basic building blocks in data collection, in IT investment, and in governments. And so if you don't collect the data in the same way, from city to And so if you don't collect the data in the same way, from city to city, how are you going to share it? If you collect the data in a narrative field and there's no way to run a query on it, then how are you going to use that information? How are you going to pull it and do analysis? So, one of the things we work very hard at at CTG is work across programmatic areas. So we think about data, we think about information, we think about processes in a standalone way. So it could be Health and Human Services, Public Safety, Code Enforcement. It could be many programmatic areas of government. And really, this happens everywhere, in every area of government, in every city. Schenectady is not any different. Because you want to increase your capability and your capacity to share code enforcement-related information. That make sense? Want to do these things, but you got to back it up. It's almost like going down a rabbit hole all the way to the data, to the information, and how it's collected, how it's defined, what format it's in. It's having an agile infrastructure. Which means, are you able to do the things in your code enforcement department that you want to do? Does your system allow you to do that? This city has tremendous code enforcement programs. But not all of them are being done through the system that is currently in place. Tools were made. You have Eric Schilling is one of the most progressive code enforcement people there is, not only in the capital region. I talk about some of the programs that Schenectady is doing with people who are working at a national level, and it is extremely progressive. What we want to do is help him get the data, information, and systems in place to support those, because he's already doing great things. So here are some of the questions we asked people. And if you saw the list, we asked community groups, we asked zoning, we asked planning, we asked nine-one-one dispatch, but we asked everybody these questions. I'm giving you some high-level findings, there is a report that you can have. Code enforcement operations is extremely high-performing. They're doing seven hundred-plus tickets, almost seven thousand permits, and a hundred licenses. But we wanted to learn about how hard it is to get that work done. This code enforcement department serves as an information center. And again, this is not unlike many cities who are understanding how important this information is to their other departments. So, calls per week from nine-one-one dispatch. Social Services, Planning, Engineering, OGS. So when you think about the people who are going out to do the work, they're also serving as an information center. Okay? So when you think about building the capability in the code enforcement program and sharing information, what you want to do is some of the things, cut down on the amount of calls that come into the department. Allow it so people can go in and look at the information themselves. It doesn't mean that it's going to go away right away. People like to call and talk to somebody, "What do you think?" There's a lot of institutional knowledge, but there is some information that could be shared. Code enforcement department is a client center. This is, this is one of my favorites. They were able to boil down that the license has about six interactions. Okay? So you need to have many interactions in order for it to get to complete. Eighty-five percent of the people do not print it online, they come in. A lot of that's because they have questions. There's institutional knowledge with the code enforcement people. You may never be able to change that. But we wanted to show how, in addition to all the programs that they're enacting, they're serving as an information center, as a client center, and they're due carrying out all of the other responsibilities of the code enforcement department. So when we asked all the groups, "What is the most important information? What data do you want as it relates to code enforcement?", this is what came up. Owner information, property address, permit issued, history of violations, and status of violations. Police and Fire had their own list of nice-to-have and must-have. The zoning had their own, but across all, this is what came up. Owner information isn't as easy as it sounds. Every department has to collect it on their own cycle. Nine-one-one dispatch has a tremendous database of owner information, not just here, but everywhere. So it's figuring out how to get the most up-to-date information.
I'm sorry, what does this be out on that slide?
Uh, section one of the slide.
Section one of the slide.
Yes.
I don't get my text.
Right.
That's true.
I'll just go on to project number one, jump back. So, here we are, May two thousand and fifteen. City of Schenectady awarded the grant in the lead of four cities. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the vision and the goals of, of that project are, because you never meet all of the needs of everyone in every piece of information. But you try to do the best you can in order to share. At the very beginning, about two years ago, I spent a tremendous amount of time talking to people all across the United States about light. There's an organization called the Center for Community Progress. They do amazing things all over the place. But one of the things people said to me was that, "Two things you're doing in your area I haven't heard about before. Number one, you're making it regional." Cities do a lot internally to share information within their city, but to go across cities, that's somewhat new. There is a project in Cleveland, but they did it more at the community level. So that is, that is new and different and revolutionary. The second one is, you're focusing on building capability within cities who don't already have the necessary components in place. Now, if you look at the four cities, Schenectady and Troy use different systems, but are using systems. Amsterdam and Bludersville are using less sophisticated systems that collect only a portion of the information. So the grant... Can you move to the next one, and then off to the back? Done. Go back. So the grant has four goals. Number one, determine what the needs are in each of the cities. If you like your system, and you have everything that you need, then we're going to focus on sharing between the cities. But if you don't, what are the things that you need to do? And, and with Schenectady, we already have a deep dive look, but we have to do that with the other cities. Develop the technical and policy foundation of a shared platform. So if you're going to share information across the capital region and potentially the state, then you need to get together and talk about definitions. I've been in the room with four cities, police and fire, as we talk about what a vacant or unoccupied building is. I've been in there, and there's disagreements. This is not a standardization, but rather bringing to people together, saying, "If you want to share information, we're going to have to come to some sort of an alignment." Not across the whole state, but a couple of definitions that people can agree on. So that's developing this foundation of the shared platform. Encourage, increase uniformity in process and definition. Two of the cities right now, I know, are very much looking forward to spending more time with Schenectady's code enforcement department. And Eric has already been to Amsterdam and Bludersville, because they want to adopt some of the processes that are already working here. And the last goal is very important to the Department of State. Establish a cultural community of knowledge sharing, and with other cities in the future. That's one of the reasons they talk about why they funded this. Because urban light is affecting cities all over New York State, and they want a groundswell. They want the communities to come together and figure out how they're going to share, and how they're going to adopt each other's practices. What works, what doesn't? And this is one way to begin to do that. Can you move back? Sorry. So here's something that I want to make sure that we just cover. There are uniform codes in New York State. Everyone has to abide by them. But the definitions and the electronic formats by which they are captured is left up to each locality. And that's not any different than social services, state-supervised, locally-administered programs. But if you want to pump it up to a regional level, you have to come to some sort of alignment. So there's lack of easily accessible code enforcement-related data within cities. There's many cities, you know, bigger ones across the United States that have public portals. You can go in and you can see the information. I know we've all looked at Chicago, New Orleans. Those are great, but those are large cities, many resources, have all the systems in place, and they're sharing information within one city. So what can we do in this region to build accessibility a little bit more within the departments and across the region? And no formal mechanism for information sharing. As much as we looked to say, "How are code enforcement officers getting together? How are they sharing this information?", we couldn't find it. So if we can play a role in helping that... I, I mean, the first meeting where, where they met each other in the capital region was great. They had a shortlist of people who were causing problems in all the cities, and they were already starting to problem solve. This picture's not the greatest one, but it gives you an idea of what we're trying to do. Because the goal isn't just to have the shared information resource across the region. It's for each city to start sharing information more easily across corporation council, real property, building inputs. I want to talk a little bit about roles in this project. The City of Schenectady is the lead, they have experience and expertise. But as David will talk about at the end, you also, all the contracting is coming through. The city has the lead grantee of the award. CTG, we have experience in this, not only from project management, but IT specialization, public sector information sharing, bringing communicate, communicate communities together. And essentially, when it gets hard, when you have everybody in the room and no one's agreeing, trying to figure out some common ground. The cities are all experts in their area. So they're going to come to the table and say, "These are the things that we need. This is how Bludersville is different, this is how Troy is different." Troy's using a program that they love, but it does certain things that they need more help on. So they're very open about that. Whereas Amsterdam is also, is looking for many different areas of the code enforcement program. And having this funded by the Department of State is the best thing that could have happened. Here's why, because they can leverage a statewide reach. Since this has been announced, I've been contacted by national organizations, law schools, other cities. People want to know how they become a part of this. Some want to do the information sharing. Some say, "Are you going to get a group of people and start talking about definitions?" We want to know what you are doing. The great work all the landbanks have done, figuring out how to tie into that. I will say that the first year is just focusing on the cities. You got to do some work at home before you think about regional sharing. So I know you can't read the timeline, but we thought we'd put it up there. There's many different activities, there's lots of work to be done, starting over the summer, and... So deliverables. What are you going to see from this project? There's many activity reports that we have to produce. There's high-level process maps of each of the cities. There's a requirements document that will allow to procure either enhancements for cities, or a system for a city and the sharing platform. There's a governance and oversight model. One of the things the Department of State has said to us was, "We want to know how this is going to be sustainable in the future." So what would governance look like? When CTG works on these projects, we're not in the business of running production systems. We're in the business of helping governments figure out, procure the technology, and getting them going for a couple of years, and then it's governed itself. And then statewide recommendations. What can people come together on, what can't they? What programs were shared, what's context-specific? And so I very quickly went over a lot of things. But for tonight, I know that David wanted to talk about the agreements in this grant. And so before he comes up, let me just see if there's any questions from anyone about...
Nope.
No?
Nope.
There's a grant that was awarded, did you give the amount of that?
Um, the grant came to five fifty-eight. Yes. It's... For four cities.
Four cities.
For four cities, yes. It was not fully funded. Question in eight.
Oh.
Yeah.
And over what timeframe?
Two years.
Twenty-four months.
Two years.
There was a slide, a slide that I saw that said how, I'm not sure where it was, there like, I don't know, maybe the third or fourth, how this is going to be spent? Can we just...
I don't think we have that.
Not specifically, but it just gave some general categories.
Project goals?
Earlier on. Yeah. Keep going back. One more? It was early in the slideshow that you showed, it showed what the money was going to be used for. Pay salaries, different things. I saw it.
Okay, so we'll go through them one by one. And you start at the beginning.
Because I don't have it in my hard copy.
No.
And then I'll...
It's not...
Okay, I'll just, I'll go through it, and then I'll...
Okay.
Was it in the material that you had, got in the packet?
Am I, pardon?
Yeah.
Is it in the material in the packet?
It's like fifty pages, I don't know. Okay.
Okay, so, um... I believe it's in the packet. I'm going to turn it over to David, unless there's any other questions that I can answer for anyone. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is a section called payment and, payment and reporting.
Where is that?
It's in the contract.
Number three in the, is the main heading. It doesn't have a page number.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I'm going to write down page number. It's like halfway up, yeah. Too far.
Too far? Back to the slide?
It's earlier slide.
There you go.
Got it. Bingo. We need these pages numbered next time, Mr. Clerk. You know what I mean, for ease of...
I was actually... I was actually...
Because we have two chapters.
I was actually going to recommend you not print this, because it was so long.
That was wrong, my goodness. Save some pencil green. Alright, Mr. Frank, you're on my front. It was too large.
So there's three agreements that you see in there in draft. First one, between the Department of State and the City of Schenectady, that's the acceptance of. As the awardee, they will only contract with us, so we are going to contract with them. Then we enter into an... Then we enter into an initial agreement with the other three partner cities, which will go over what our responsibilities on the region municipalities as it relates to this grant. And then we're contracting with the Center of Community Development for the whole thing.
We're the best logo there in San Antonio. Just want you to know that. All right. Any questions on the agreement?
The draft copies all the agreements already.
It's on there. And what is our share of this again, David?
There's a 10% local match.
That's... I thought that was in there.
On this $5.58. It's... It'd be approximately 15,000 municipalities. It depends on how the impact is, but that's the approximate.
Just another question. Would council members be invited to attend some of these meetings with these home enforcement municipalities?
Absolutely.
I mean, if there's any way we can get on that... We can get on that. I think it'd be interesting for us to know as well what's happening. We're talking to our constituents and just understanding, you know, the inside outs. Of course, we get a lot of phone calls as well saying things are not working as well. And we know that things are doing very well. But I think if we can get on that list, just to invite us, and if any of us can show it, it'd be great.
Right. It's really a dynamic process.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So I'm sorry, just finding out how you would like to be informed. Email.
Yeah. Who knows would be very...
Email and a presentation of findings along the line? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can keep us involved. I think this is just, again, just another wonderful opportunity for us to share services and work with our other sister cities, if you will. And again, a major problem that we all have. Again, to get us all on the same page, I think is very important, especially with the technology that we have out there. So thank you very much for doing this. And do you need anything else from us on this, David? Or we still have more presentation?
It's just a referral for the mayor to turn in these three agreements. So that's why we include the performance statistics. We're still in the process of finalizing the appropriations. We only expect major changes in the future.
Any other questions?
Do we have access to the actual PowerPoint? Do we actually have access to the PowerPoint?
You can have the PowerPoint.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. So we need a motion to move this. Ms. Brazile and Mr. Fariel, on favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Again, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for being here with us. Thank you. All right. As they're wrapping up, is there promotional video that we're giving now?
Oh, we're not seeing promotional video tonight. What I'd like to break forth to the council is that we invite the Skentucky County Visitors Agency to come and show a promotional video that they put together at the next council meeting. It's of Skentucky County, but a lot of it is city-centric, and it's really very beautiful. So I thought the council might like to see it.
So the next Monday prior to...
Actually, next Wednesday.
Oh, it's Wednesday. Yes, that's right.
This is the meeting that we have because of the holiday and then because of Revenus Day.
Oh, my goodness. We're not going to have anybody there.
The next council meeting will be Wednesday night at seven o'clock.
Can you make sure that Mr. Fahey is aware of that, that it's Wednesday?
Mr. Who?
Fahey. The gentleman, Chad has...
Oh, is that... Okay. Is that who's showing up? Paul?
Yeah.
All righty. Seeing nothing before this committee.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Ms. Brazile, Ms. Fariel, on favor, say aye. And we are... Thank you.
Okay. I will call the order of operations. The House is standing to be before. The votes in the US. There's an amendment that was...
I took it off the agenda. Mr. Riggi had raised a question of whether in here we wanted to state that a member of SLIC would be on the board. At that point, we had not talked about it. We weren't here yet. So I just said, all right, let's hold this for two weeks, and we can have a conversation in the committee.
Well, I think what we included was that a multi-unit property owner was included. So not specifically to SLIC because if SLIC ends up disbanding at some point...
No, any landlord. So...
Yeah.
I wasn't clear that they had an appointment to this. I thought it was just the mayor was going to take recommendations.
The mayor takes... Yes. The mayor takes recommendations.
I wanted to see written legislation that they will have an appointment.
But what if they go away? You know what I mean? Like, what if they disband?
Then they don't have an appointment. There's no group. There's not a landlord's group. I wanted to be clear that it'd be their choice, of course, that would be appointed to the board.
Comments?
Again, it's only a recommendation to the mayor. The mayor still have the final say as to the five appointees.
I think what Mr. Riggi is asking is that SLIC can appoint someone to the board.
Without the mayor's approval? Is that what you're saying?
It sounds like...
You're saying without the mayor's approval?
Yeah. They would have an appointment to the board.
Regardless of the mayor says yes or no to that individual, whoever he...
Someone tells to approve it finally, right?
No. I'm thinking what he's trying to do is make a provision into the resolution that SLIC would have the opportunity to always have a member on the board. It's something like that. Yeah, something like that. Now, really, the board will appoint someone. The board will make recommendation for that specific person to be at any given time to represent the organization.
It's... As I interpreted, it's still the mayor's appointment, but you're saying that one of the appointees would have to be a member of SLIC.
Yes.
Or any landlord's group. Not to legacy SLIC specifically. But it would represent...
So you're saying have a definition rather than a multi-unit property owner? So defining it more by a multi-unit property owner organization?
Organization.
Okay. So I don't know. I'm hung up on the multi-unit property owner organization. Because what does that mean?
That might be a little... So instead of having it so broad, we need to define...
Right. I understand, but...
There's so many different...
I struggle with the terminology of multi-unit property owner organization.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I was trying to understand what the council was trying to say in regards to...
So a member of landlord's association that owns a multi-unit property?
Or are we saying that that has to be... Can it be separate and apart from the multi-owner? Does it have to be one or the other or included in that? It can't be a landlord's association outside of that, the multi-unit? Because the multi... Let's say we have somebody who holds a multi-unit, but they don't belong to any landlord organization. They just have to be an owner. So are we now excluding that person? Is that person then has to be a member of an organization?
That's why this point is like...
No, no. What I'm saying is that we could have both. We could have this in there and then add that. If that's... Does that roughly find...
Yeah. That's something. What we should try to do in here is maybe say, a member shall come from the landlord association, something like that, rather than saying the multi-unit.
How many people are in this board? Five, correct?
When you say shall, that means the mayor has to appoint somebody from that organization?
That's where...
That's the reason.
That's the purpose of adding it. Is that they will be a representative at any given time on the board representing...
So two or three people, and aside from, let's just say SLIC again, then the mayor would have to choose one of those three.
They will make a recommendation.
Hopefully, they would have a consensus and come up with one individual name.
More than likely, yes.
I'm fine with that, but I do think it should be a multi-unit property owner. So just because I think that's where a lot of the questions arise. You know what I mean? So... But that's fine. They can be a member of SLIC. It's just... I think it's a little limiting, but I don't have any opposition to it.
And that would give them the opportunity to, you know, to have a say on the board. And the organization will relay the concerns and issue they have to the board by having that member on that board.
That's true. Oh, yes. It's like...
So how many landlords or property owners are represented by SLIC? Are members of the SLIC organization? Why? I'm just asking.
Is there an ask you have now?
We have both.
And they're all current on their property taxes? Everybody's current on your property taxes? Yes, yes, yes.
But it's in the legislation that they have to have.
Even if they're not in there, members of SLIC, because SLIC doesn't control that, before they can be a member of this board, they would have to.
Have to.
Absolutely.
It's written in the legislation.
Yes.
So I guess we just change the...
The multi...
No, we leave it as the multi-unit property owner and adds a member of SLIC.
Okay.
And then if SLIC disbands, we worry about that at that point?
So we're kind of modifying the multi-unit property owners so that they have to be a member of SLIC? As opposed to leaving that in there and then including the other part? Because then that limits...
Then you have a six-person board that can get by.
No. No, I'm not asking to add another person. Just add another district.
Yes.
So... So because then that means if you're members of SLIC, but you don't own a multi-unit, then you could never serve on this board or whatever organization if we were according to set. That means if I'm a property owner and I belong to that, then I couldn't, you know, if I only own, you know, one family, I couldn't ever...
Well, it would be a two-family.
Two-family. Two-family, and I wouldn't... And I couldn't ever... I could not.
Isn't a two-family a multi-unit property?
I don't know if that's considered a multi-unit.
Pre-...
Is it pre-owned?
Yeah.
I have no strong opinion. I think when we originally had this conversation, we thought that that was a good representation because multi-unit people have more challenges, but...
Well, not the case. I mean, I would say, you know, a member from the association rather than saying a multi-unit. Like, you might have a member who is willing to serve on the board who is not a multi-unit owner.
Okay.
Okay. Would Mr. Veltigal's standard be on this? Do you have any interpretation?
We're just... It's really the project, the mayor and council. I just want to make sure that it's clear in direction in terms of how you like it worded. When we talk about multi-unit, you know, we could have that be a two-unit. I know we say right now, three-unit, we need to have a commercial building. But that's what we usually refer to as multi-unit. But it could have a different meaning in this. And just another thing, as I'm trying to identify potential problems down the road, you know, I have the landlord's group. However, we draft that have a representative. I know we've had a tenants' group in the past. I know they're a little active. I don't know if they'll be able to also want to have tenants' group because one of the purposes, council wanted for the board to state, like, tenants as well. Just to address that.
Yeah. Because now we're going on the ownership side, nothing on the tenant side.
Yeah.
Right? And then you can't work one way without the other. My thing is, I don't want both sides of the equation. I mean, from a fair board, I'm sure.
We need to invite it to the table.
Right?
Okay. So wait a minute. It's not moving something here. If we were ready to pass this last week with a multi-unit property owner, what difference does it mean, matter, if we're now having a property owner through SLIC? It's still the same board, so...
You're being very specific now to that group.
Well, being specific to the group that I always have a member...
But it's still a property owner.
But then you might find someone who's willing to serve might not have been a multi-unit property owner. So you can shorten the...
Right. But of course, it has to be a property owner or else why would it be on the board? Right. I mean, that's the whole idea. So that's why I'm just confused about bringing the tenant into it now. But now that I'm also getting heard by the board, but... I think we're really just adding two words, you know, or three words, the members.
I think she says, as soon as discussion comes up, that's just... The more you discuss it, the more things come on the table. So I think that's where the tenant part came in.
Right.
I think we should just, you know, a member from the organization and the multi-unit. I think for some reason, the organization should just...
Dissolves, right?
What do we do next?
We have to have...
We can always revisit the resolution and amend it.
Why don't you propose the word in a way that instead of having groups named SLIC, just whatever group, legal organization, and most members are best represented to interest...
That's totally subjective. Yeah, I can see it now. We'll have a SLIC group coming up saying, you know, we're the best.
But just something, so if a group did disband, that there's a mechanism to fill that spot for board until another group came or something to that effect. So you're not left with a four-person board or...
That's good.
Right.
So what are we changing?
So would you like to put some legislation, what's the word, before us? Is that just what you're saying?
I think it's in the draft for Friday. I'll leave it for Friday.
Very good. I would like to include the word property owner there. A member of a property-owning member of SLIC or a rental property-owning member of SLIC. Because otherwise, you know, not that they aren't altogether because they're landlords, but I just think a rental property owner, a member of SLIC...
So you remove the word multi to a property owner?
Sure. I have no...
I don't have a problem with that.
I have no... That's something we came up with for extra protection. So I could get... Whatever. You don't need to change it. Fine.
Good with me.
Okay. So something along the lines of a rental property-owning member of SLIC.
Landlord Association, or you go with SLIC?
I'll send you some proposed language.
Okay. All right, good.
I have a landlord association, but then I think we're opening ourselves up to, why did you pick somebody from that group and not somebody from that group?
So can I ask a SLIC group another question? Because I...
Absolutely, Mr. Collier.
A little bit familiar with yourselves, but not completely, as I should. Your membership is open to any property owner who owns property in the City of Skentucky? And how are they notified in meetings? Is there a public address? Is there something in the Gazette that notifies us of the meetings?
Yes.
Are there membership dues that are required of me?
Yes. It would be fully covered.
And what are those dues?
For my daughter.
For the year. So there's an application process and everything else that is given to you, who board the president is. Any of board directors as well?
Right.
And there's board records?
We have executive. All board directors are working. And I want to... I'm going to have to say something here. Mr. Riggi is championing our request that we be able to suggest someone for this board. We did not specify that we need to be SLIC, although that's what we know. We know we need to be... That was not a specification. We would like to have a landlord who knows about rentals. It's about pool, it's business. And that makes sense because the other people on that board may not have any involvement with rentals and not understand any of the work. So that only makes sense, which was not part of the original plan back in the 1990s. So that was our intention.
So just for clarification, that's been in here since day one. We had the listing of the multi-property unit owner in this legislation for months and months. So I'm not sure where the breakdown in communication is, but it sounds to me like your desire is... Let me try that again. Specifically have it from SLIC. So I just want to be clear on that. Because it was already...
No.
You're saying that's not what the...
Okay. So then we're having this question, this conversation for not?
Well, we are fine with that. Understand that landlords that we know and are familiar with and know all are those who are meeting with us on a regular basis, and we know it. So naturally, certainly, Mr. Riggi is talking about thinking in terms of SLIC. We're going to motion to have that happen. The thing is, is suggesting that the actually in the legislation, that is definitely be something that will be considered, that we can offer up a name and a candidate.
Well, just so you're aware, because it certainly seems to me like SLIC would like a member up there on the board, that you have the responsibility to make sure that that person is present and engaged. Because that's what happened with the Police Review Board. When we got into different agencies appointing people, they didn't appoint people. they didn't appoint people, they didn't get a forum, and then the board couldn't meet. So that's where my hesitation comes in naming a specific entity instead of being general. Not, I have no qualms about SLIC having a member on the board, but that's where we've gotten into trouble with boards in the city before becoming defunct quickly, so...
So one question, Carl, just you said, so a multi-unit property owner, is that a, that's a commercial individual? Is that what you're saying for the most part?
I think the three versus two-unit, um, building distinction is what we're looking for. Commercial building, presidential, where people live, but three units or higher. And a two-unit building would be considered presidential.
So did that be where our problem is maybe? I mean...
No, if, if, then you also would consider taking someone who's a landlord, talking about being a landlord, who may have only two-unit properties, but have seven of them, you know. So they're, they're multi-units, not all in one. Experience in business of...
That's what I'm trying to...
I knew I wasn't crazy when we put this wording together to begin with.
Right.
But to, okay, let's, let's dial, let's get to wording because I think we know where we are. So a rental property-owning landlord, that's a member of SLIC, is what we ended up, correct?
There is.
What if I, we, a member of SLIC or a successor landlord organization? That way if SLIC disappears, you're covered.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good, that's good. So when we're all retired in 20 years from now?
So we're getting rid of the multi-unit and say rental property-owning landlord.
Rent, yeah, get rid of the word multi.
Yes. Should we do that? What should we, can't we have, that's why I keep saying, why can't we have this group and the multi?
Because then we have six members.
No.
And/or, you're saying?
There's two specific, there's two, there's two specific things that say they have.
I understand.
Well, one specific. There's five, okay? One of them has to be a multi, um...
Now you know why I'm a multi.
Okay, what is the other four?
An architect, it's in there.
No, not, no, the architect can be the same person. Okay.
All right, John.
Since the five means that one member should be a registered architect or a professional engineer and one member should be a multi-unit property owner, registered architect or professional engineer, blah, blah, blah.
And they can be the same person conceivably.
Right.
So conceivably, there's only really one board, so if you want to separate them, that really has to be specific.
Does anyone have language that they look to put forth if they want this to...
I think the recommendation of Carl is, it's a wonderful idea. The last, um...
Is everybody else comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that, so let's move on with that.
Anyone else?
Yes, so we have covered...
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. If you could make those changes?
Not to bring this up, can you? Are we going to leave it?
No, we are going to change that to a rental property-owning landlord.
Right, yes.
Not a multi-unit.
Perfect.
So, and the other, so anybody else in the general public can then be a member of the board? You don't have to be a property owner, you don't have to be an architect, you just be the general public.
Yes. Oh, and that's the reason why I want to...
Which I don't think is a bad thing.
No, it's not.
You know, it was...
All right.
That was a good answer.
Next answer.
Okay, other comments or questions?
No.
Everybody's okay?
Hold on.
Yes, this one?
Let's talk about that. It's, um, when there was someone who came to the rail and talked about the appeals and was talking about that, any complaint after a specific, you know, they have to go through their whole litigation process before they can then come to the board. So... I guess I, I do, I'm kind of like asking, is there another way that we could do that that they, before they went to that? Because then they're, because if they get their, if they go through the legal action, everything is done, um, how will the board help them?
There is an appeal process built in to the code system where they can appeal. And I just, I, I feel very, very strongly that giving this board the appeal option can then hold things up, right? They can't meet for long because they don't have a forum. I mean, not, no fault of the board, they want to meet, but they don't have a forum. Now we're pushing something back 30 days or a couple weeks or whatever. When we're talking about safety issues, I, I think it's very dangerous. And I think we had this conversation, if anybody doesn't agree, I'm one of seven, that's fine. But I look at it and go, okay, you know, there's an appeal process built in. If they go through the legal action, they're still not happy with how the end result happened, they can go to the board and the board can make recommendations to the city. Um, I just think we're putting people's safety at risk to be able to stop the legal process uh, in, until the board makes a decision. Um, I think it's a slippery slope and I, I don't feel flexible about it, but I'm just one.
I agree with, with you a hundred percent, you know, but in the sense that if for some reason there is this mult, this dangerous issue that has arisen and like you said, there's not enough people to get together to create a forum, this is going to hold things back for a long period of time, for about a month. And therefore, I, I think by having them as a resource for an appeal would be more beneficial than to have them prior to.
A resource, a resource when they review the case.
Correct.
If they feel it's unfair. And I also want to say that this is, no, I don't think our, you know, all of our landlords are creating dangerous situations, but it comes up, you know, and we have the evidence of it right across the street. And, you know, I, if I were sitting on the board, I wouldn't even want the responsibility of something like that happening on my watch. Um, so I, I just, I feel really strongly about that.
Let me just, uh, but I, I think, um, public safety, life, life and safety has been excluded from this. I mean, if there is a, if there's a safety concern, it has to be fixed within a given 24-hour period of time. Is that correct? If it's a public safety concern, regardless of this board, the item has to be fixed?
Every violation has a period of time that it has to be fixed in.
But if it's a, if it's a safety concern, safety hazard...
Safety, the, depending on severity of the violation, the amount, the time, the changes. It could be as much as 30 days or as little as 24 hours.
24 hours. And the other question is that, I mean, with this part here, the D, I mean, what is the purpose of the board then? If you have to go through the prosecution and you have to, you know, go through all the legal, um, action the city's going to take against the landlord and you're going to appeal after that, what effect would that have?
You're not going to appeal, you're going to use the appeal process that's written into the codes. And then if you're not happy with the outcome, the board is a sounding board to make recommendations to the city. And then it comes to the council.
And if you, what I gave, this was modeled after the police review board. So whatever that's worth, it's kind of the same idea where the complaint's made and then once the court process is over with that and it's investigated and then the board will look at it and make a determination or police handle that situation appropriately.
I mean, in my, in my opinion, we're talking about legal action here. I don't think that a board should be empowered to stop legal action. And this is, that would be like saying, somebody gets arrested and they can think they were arrested unfairly and they can just stop the process. I just don't, I think it's just dangerous. I, I don't think any, anyone should hold that power. I think it's important that if somebody feels that they're treated unprop, you know, unfairly, that they have an outlet to say, listen, I was treated unfairly. And then the board can do, you know, their due diligence to look into what, the backstory behind that and bring that to the city council. But to stop a legal process, I just, it shouldn't happen.
I'm going to agree.
So I guess, I guess at this point, we need to do a little straw poll as to with changes that we've made, who is willing to support the, the legislation as is, uh, when we vote on it on Monday?
With, pending, pending the changes?
Depending, would you appoint him from SLIC?
Yes, I'm, I'm supporting him.
Mr. Ferrari, Mr. Griggy? Very good. Okay, thank you all, all your hard work.
To Long Beach.
Thank you. I'm going to screen the highest standing review board and, um...
Play that, Carl.
No, but thank you all for your, for your discussion and, uh, conversation and making sure that we're all on the same page and making sure that we, um, talk about this to get it to a point where we're all comfortable. So, um, I will ask for a motion to amend the legislation.
So move, second?
Oh, I would be so eager. Very good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any other, uh, um, business to come before governor amputations?
Move to be adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
You like that?
All right.
Call for a call for recreation?
I move it.
We have...
You should take 30 seconds.
Okay, uh, this is a discussion to delete chapter 86, our section, section 86.9, dead 86.11, uh, from the city's, um, draft, since it's the center city bureau.
The Bureau of Center City.
Okay. All right, um, so you have it in your packet and, um, this is, was in the legislation, but it has, it's pretty much the same. Because that's, this, center city doesn't as, it's...
No ice there anymore?
Doesn't, no, there's no ice there anymore.
Ice out of it.
It no longer exists, so this is just coming through for the legal legislation because it's no longer needed.
Very good, I will move that.
Uh, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else to come before governor's creation?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, I hope, call to our city development and planning, um, we, item number three, we're going to hold for two weeks. Uh, but item number one, the city lien at 2522 Campbell Avenue is forward.
Thanks, executive session?
No. This is just...
So, I don't know where to start. Okay, generally when we sell properties, um, in the city, we do it with the reverter agreement when they're to be owner occupied. And with that is a, um, mortgage for $20,000 that's filed as a lien against the property to ensure that people are going to stay there for five years. The owners of 2522 Campbell Avenue have taken on other development projects in the city. Uh, you're probably familiar with them, it's Chris Malizia and Malizia Brothers. So they refinished a house on Campbell Avenue, 2602 also, and they bought that as an investment. They're trying to purchase another property, but in order to do so, they need to free up some of the money on their home equity. And they can't do that with this lien in place. So they were asking that the mortgage be discharged, uh, so into a need to get a home equity loan. So just basically all of their assets aren't liquid at this point, everything's kind of tied up. So they can't really do, they're at standstill right now until they sell their one property, but they'd like to keep moving on for another part of the summer.
Ms. Brazza?
So, I'm sorry, the, the, the house that they redid, they're living in though, right?
The house that they redid, his brothers live, there's two brothers.
Right, okay, so there's, so...
But I think they're trying to sell that, the, the 2602, 2522 they are living in. They have two houses.
One of the brothers.
Oh, so they have two houses?
They have two houses, yeah.
So which, but the one they did the presentation on is the one the brothers live in?
Yes, yeah, that was the original house.
And that's not the one the lien is on?
That's the one the lien is on.
So that's the one the lien is on?
Yeah.
So can we make a stipulation that we will be moving the lien, but he's still required to live there for five years?
He's going to live there for five years, it's just a matter of, I mean, we can have something in writing, but we just can't have the mortgage there, so it's going to be harder to... The D will still stay in place, that he has the reverter with the use agreement, they have to stay there for five years, but the mortgage won't be in place, so...
Well, and I think if we had a contract of some sort that he had signed, I mean, I think that's fair, right?
Definitely. I think it's good because, you know, moving forward, they're trying to, you know, make the city better and, and, you know, I think it's all good and the work they're doing has been great. So I, I fully support it, but I just, um, like I said, we can do something in contract that says they'll stay there and, you know, through the duration of the five years. It's already been two years, so...
I mean, I, I think that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a little question, on the other property that we purchased for the last time, probably, are they, are fixing it at this point in time?
That's already been fixed, but I think they're trying...
The old property has been fixed?
Yep, they're both fully...
That's rented out, the one on 14th Street, they already rented out, right?
So...
That's a single family.
That's a single family, yeah, that's correct, yeah. But they do great work and I know that they're really excited about working in the city, so it's just a financial part of it.
So basically, we're going to be holding paper for them rather than through a bank?
We hold anything anyway here, but we normally, we have, we sign a mortgage, we file with the county clerk, we hold a mortgage here for $20,000 and it goes secondary to their primary mortgage. But just because they have a mortgage on the property plus this one, it, it limits the amount of money they can borrow. So there's already a use agreement in place, so...
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion then to remove the lien?
Is that a move to come in, sir?
I know. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Schenectady Housing Development Fund Corporation, Mr. Ferrari has implicated an interest in serving on this. So I would like to move forward with getting him appointed to that. Ms. Porterfield, are you going to do that?
Um, okay.
Second, Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, sale of four properties to the land bank, Mr. Strickland? Does this have to be executive session or...
It doesn't have to be, it may be, but something happens.
Let's do it.
Okay, uh, it's actually, there's two pieces, there's item number, uh, four and number five. And number five, we should probably, we should probably be first, we can accept three properties from syrup. Uh, and now with the three properties there in syrup, we just agreed to transfer, which is 105, uh, 123 Prospect Street and 114 Quarter Street.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept those properties from syrup?
Move it.
Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
And then the sale of the four properties, those three, plus 795 Eastern Avenue to the land bank for a dollar apiece. As you know, we have the memorandum of understanding between the Urban Renewal Agency, the city of Schenectady, the land bank, and the state of the IDA to undertake this redevelopment process, program that we're doing along Eastern Avenue right now. The land bank is going to start doing its first demolitions up there, uh, either the last week of May or the first week of June. Our piece has been completed, so that will start. One of them is 795 Eastern Avenue. Uh, the other three properties there that we're talking about is 105 Prospect, which we will be demolishing as well at the same time, 114 Quarter Street, which we will be demolishing, but in the next round. And the third, fourth property is 123 Prospect Street, which is a bungalow, uh, and that would go to the land bank. We would do some abatement on it and then have, have an honor auction.
Please don't demolish 130, that's where I grew up.
130 Prospect, it's not on our radar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions? And I would entertain a motion to approve this, and Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's jump down to the number, item number nine. Um, you have a letter in there that the mayor is appointing Sarah Bonnequist, um, to the, uh, city of Schenectady Planning Commission. So I would entertain a motion to approve that. Someone has, okay, Mr. Ferrari, second.
Okay, so this is just a question, since it's the mayor's appointment, you know, before we were seeing resumes, et cetera. Does the mayor's appointment do it and you see any of that?
Uh, good question.
I think it's just an indication with the clerk's office, um, the one has a reappearance, there's actually...
That's right, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I forgot, Mary Moore Wallinger was a...
So very sorry, I didn't have a resume, but I have a copy of Sarah's resume. She's a lifelong resident of the city. She's a graduate from SUNY College of Environmental Science at Porch Street with her major in landscape architecture. She works for Place Alliance downtown. She also worked on the project at the library across the street. And she's worked on some of the Eastern Ave projects.
And she's a member of the Schenectady Green Market Board.
Is this Sarah or Mary Moore?
Sarah.
Sarah, okay. Okay, questions?
So I'll make sure that the clerk's office can share the resume.
Okay, thank you. All right, so anyway, then we did have a motion then to approve her, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to reappoint Mary Moore Wallinger, I think everybody knows Mary Moore.
No.
Move that, okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and at this point then, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Okay, it's removed, oh, sorry.
There was another appointment that didn't seem to make it onto the agenda, and I don't know...
Oh!
Yeah, um, the police review board appointment?
Yes.
Of, uh, Mr. Harris Perryman?
Forrest Perryman? Sorry, Forrest Perryman?
So the police review board. Can we, um, put that in for next Monday with unanimous, or how can we, how can we do that then? So add that in?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so the police review board has different organizations that are represented. Which organization would you be representing?
Well, there's also the mayor has a...
The mayor has...
So who, okay, just, so which appointment is this?
My understanding is that we haven't gotten any appointments from the end of LACP. And so that this person who we were representing, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference...
Southern Christian Leadership.
As the current active civil rights organization... as the current active civil rights organization.